Call the meeting recorder, our eyes for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You approve the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Review of the minutes from April 11th, 2022, draft meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Any open public comment? No?
Who do we have on, so, Michael?
That would be Angelo Lynn with Brandon Reporter, and then Megan, who I'm assuming is... Megan Canucci? Is that you, Megan Canucci?
Yes, that's me.
Alright.
Hi, Megan.
Okay.
Hi, guys.
Hi. No open public comment? No guests? Any good stuff from anybody?
Highway crews been sweeping up around town, looking good.
Okay, go highway department report. Any questions on the report that was in our packet?
Pretty straightforward.
Any comments? Questions? Okay, hearing done. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have the report in there as well. Also, Michael made a note that it's important to note that the materials have been purchased for Gore and Bridge curb stop installation.
Yes, good.
Does that mean we have them, or they've been ordered?
Uh, they've been ordered. I'm not sure if they're in or not, but Bruce was here when John and I made the handshake deal on it, because I know it's been on the list for a long time. So, we agreed on June as the project. If you're not familiar with it, I don't think I'm able to share my screen here, but I can show it to you all. Yeah, this is the... This is not accurate anymore. This, there's actually a water line that runs down this road. And what we have to do is create a new water line running down through here. But we also have to find a plumber that can go in these homes and reroute the existing plumbing to go out the front. So, not an extremely small job, but it does take some coordination with different parties. So, next week I'll focus on getting approval from these landowners. And like I said, we're on track for June.
Am I really...
This is Angelo. Oh, Angelo, it's, um, it's part of our curb stop installations. And this is, this is just an area on, on the map that doesn't allow for us to shut off water if we, if there's a delinquency or any other reasons, so...
Okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Yep.
Are my eyes deceiving me, or is the number one account made an agreement and is paying? Is that really right?
Is that the 14...
15 King Street, right at the very top. Yeah, the $14,000.
Um, so the, there was a loophole found, or not a loophole, but the, the account was under the owner's name. That owner turned the account over to the tenant. So, so we shut the water off, but legally, we had to go turn it back on because it, the name changed of the account into the tenant's name. So, I mean, he's still, the owner's still responsible for paying that. But now there's a, there's a new bill that the tenant has to pay.
Okay.
We researched it, it's...
As a lien would place in a property?
No.
We will do that.
That would be up to the treasurer, or the delinquent.
Could you talk about that, please?
So the tenant, I assume, did it just so they could stay in the house?
That water's just shut off for years.
Turn it back on.
Right.
But that, that water's been shut off for at least three, if not more, years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they have to turn it back on during the winter most of the...
Okay.
That sounds efficient.
I mean, well, I mean, well, they know, they know how to play the game.
Exactly.
So, I, I was also very surprised by it and did research and, uh, and emailed the L C. Well, we can, I can pull the statute that I found and send it to you, and then we can maybe have another discussion about it.
Michael, if we have questions about this, ask Celia?
Yes.
Okay.
She owns another property too, that he's delinquent on?
Yeah, I thought there were two on separate corners.
And that one's got a curb stop, so...
When are we going to start turning off?
We've already started, I mean, she's got disconnects going out today. John might have to install four curb stops to make that happen.
Well, I mean, we've got some that have curb stops in already, but...
Then if, then if she sent out those notices, they're ready to be shut off, and they'll be shut off.
So, any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What are we gonna do with the ones that make an agreement and don't follow through?
That would be definitely a Celia question.
So any that have a curb stop and don't have an agreement and are like three years behind should be shut off ASAP, correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So any of the ones that don't, that have a big balance, no agreement, have a curb stop, should be shut off?
Yeah, unless there's circumstances, I don't know, but should be shut off, yes.
So can we, are we gonna make like a list and give it to them to say, here's like the top seven right now that can be shut off?
Yeah, so... If you don't mind, I'm just gonna take a look at the list real quick.
Can't believe there's so many agreements.
I know.
A lot of it was, um...
I got notes all over this.
COVID bunny.
Oh, right.
So, all the top ones have agreements except for Matt Tremble, right?
Yeah.
Oh, shouldn't I be saying names out loud, or? I don't think it matters, right? We list them in the annual report?
Yeah, you can say.
Okay.
And then there are several that have said for the last month, I think, that they've been sent disconnect orders. 24 Green Square, 17 Park Street. 51 Shaggerton Park, 129 West. Those have been, all said that they had notices for a long time.
Can we turn off now, legally?
Yes.
Let's do it.
I, I'm gonna invite, uh, Celia to our next meeting officially and, um, and discuss it. And she said she'd be willing to do that. She wanted to do it in executive session, since...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, but I'm not...
We already discussed it in the public session and put it on the table, so what's the executive session?
Well, and that's what I was kinda, that's what I was alluding to. I'm not sure if there's any justification to go into executive session. I mean, there are names here, but they would, we would list them in the annual report.
And I don't think even the, even the names wouldn't satisfy the statute for going into executive session.
It doesn't make any difference, once it's on your desk, it's in public session. You've had it in public session.
Every time.
Every meeting.
Right.
So you better come up with a really good neat reason why you think it's in executive session.
Well, and like I'm, like I'm kinda advising you, I don't, I don't think there's any reason to, that's, I'm just repeating what she, she had said. So, um...
Well, I don't understand, you know, why we need Celia, why we need to wait two weeks, why we need more.
Like from, like you want, like you'd like me to know?
You wouldn't know?
No.
You wouldn't know?
Yeah, I'm just curious, just so I'm clear.
Well, like in the past, what we did is we'd have a list, we'd go top 10, these are the people, no agreement, they have a curb stop, they sent the notice, shut them off.
Yeah.
And then that list went to like John, and John would...
Yeah, just one Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, well, turn them off with, you know, a couple of guys.
Okay. Now, you go down the list through all the agreements and all the foreclosures and everything, and then you do get to the first few. Like, uh, 12 North Square, you've got disconnect, sent disconnect, 7 Park Street. So maybe there's just a better reporting format that I haven't quite figured out. And so were there no issues in the past with these, even doing it the method that you're saying with the top 10?
There, I think there was issues at first. We, it is kinda like we had to keep pushing, and then we wanted more clarification on here, so we knew exactly. Like if there's an agreement, good, and if they're happy with it and it's a reasonable amount, you know? I mean, I don't see how this agreement is gonna pay off $14,000.
See, I think it's just like an error in communication more than it is anything else, so, um...
Well, there's another, like, there's one agreement here, and I, the last I was told, Nastre Smith, that they weren't in compliance. And the last time they paid was October 21. So clearly they're not in, you know, in compliance with it.
There's one here, um, 2019, if I'm reading this correctly, the last time they paid was 2019. They've been sent a disconnect notice. Should've been done a lot long, you know, a lot...
Well, we can only disconnect so many days after the notice has been sent.
Yes.
No, I know that, but what I mean is it was 2019, and this is 2022, so...
We've been, we've been working from the top, they have been working from the top, so it's taking like the top ones and then the next top ones. So, it, honestly, this one was probably down a couple of years ago, was probably two pages further down. This, this was never two pages when we first started.
No.
This has gotten cleaned up quite a bit.
And they can also come in and make an agreement once they go off to disconnect.
And I think that's the tricky part of communicating it on paper, is because it is such a fluid activity, you know? It's like, as soon as you, as soon as Celia sends out a disconnect, I mean, usually what happens is they come in here and pay it. And as soon as John gets tobacco out in the front yard, they come in here and pay it. So I think that's the tricky part of reporting it. It's just such a fluid process.
It'd take a wicked spreadsheet to show all the situations.
Yeah, I hate that. I've kinda been letting you down with these disconnects for the last several months, but I think that's the really tricky part, is just...
Yeah, but how many have we got on here that signed agreements and aren't paying? You know, half a dozen?
Well, I've spoken to Celia about that. I mean, they don't stick with their agreements and they get, it's like the ones with the stars. I mean, they had an agreement, but they weren't spending it, so she sent a, a shut off notice.
I mean, it looks like the ones with the stars, there's only three.
Yeah.
Four. And a lot of the agreements, especially on the top, last payment, April, April, March.
Yeah.
March, February, April.
But some of these, you know, $3,700, uh, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna recoup some money here.
How much time do you think it would take to get through this whole list? I mean, if you did 10, okay.
Well, I think if you took off all those with an agreement, the list would be much shorter.
Oh, yeah.
So you'd just be focusing on those.
All right.
Um, but I think the thing that's confusing for, well, for me anyway, as far as saying, you know, go shut it off or whatever, a notice was sent, but when was the notice sent? You know, has that time lapsed where they could come in, you know, make an agreement?
So, Michael, do you make the spreadsheet, or does Celia make this?
Celia makes the spreadsheet. And, and, and that's kinda, I just, my... I don't really have a hand in it, is what's kinda, what's complicated.
Can we focus on the top 10, please?
Well, we really need to see who got the notices.
Well, I think she could create a thing of the top 10. Always the most who've paid, haven't paid forever, there's no agreement, there's a curb stop, they can be shut off.
Not enough information here to answer any questions.
Yeah.
And that's just basically taking this Excel spreadsheet and pulling up those.
We've gone over this for how many years now? Years. Years, we've gone through it, we're on a different lawyer now. We started out with the old lawyer.
Well, that was also two town managers ago.
Yes.
Yeah, and, um...
Yeah, we're still seeing the same names.
I will, alright, so what you're, what you're saying, Judy, is top 10, and then you don't, don't wanna see agreements, just who needs to be shut off. Top 10, who needs to be shut off?
Right, because there's nothing else that we can do with the others right now. I mean, as long as they are not paying, they're in arrears, there is no agreement, and they have a curb stop, then they can be shut off.
Yeah, let's take care of the top 10. 10 through, 11 through 20, move up to the top 10, you know?
You know what I could do? I could just post online who's getting shut off. That'd probably be too much, huh?
Well, it, it's just like the agreement. They're gonna run down here, throw some money at Celia, and they're gonna go home and not pay next month.
Alright. I'll do a little research around towns, because that always helps to see how they're reporting, and maybe they have a really effective manner of doing it. And, um...
Good idea.
Because honest, honestly, it's something I wanna get figured out so that, so that everybody understands the process. It's always one of my goals. So, uh... Two weeks, two weeks from now, two weeks from now, the goal will be to have you a clean working document that kinda clearly explains these things. So you can hold me to that expectation.
And Celia will be here, hopefully?
I can, I'll, yes, I'll send a, uh, a formal invite.
Great.
Compared to the informal ones I've been giving.
Anything else under water?
I... I think we need to be a little concerned about throwing the names out there or online. Just double check and make sure it's totally legal. It probably is.
It's a matter of the public record.
I know, I know.
It's literally sitting on our...
I know that. But everybody's been, this has been a problem for several years. I haven't been on the board for several years, but if you, you know, I can see where it's just dragging out. And in all this time, their names have not been floated around town.
Yes, Celia, they used to be in the town report. It's only been in the last two years that it hasn't been in the town report. And in fact, names have been said, business names have been said at this board, at this table, when this has been discussed. This, when it first came, it was four pages long.
Yes.
It's not even a page and a half now. I think probably if you look at other towns, which is in the town report, I bet our delinquent total number is pretty low compared to neighboring towns. Not that we should have, you know, outstanding, outstanding that.
No, I know.
And it wasn't before we, we started all this.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, in three digits.
Michael, you could even just list addresses, the property address.
Sure, we can do that. And, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not so sure it's a, I, honestly, I'm not so sure that it's a performance issue more than it's a communication issue.
Right, right.
We clean that up in the method.
Yeah.
I think we're all have a clear picture of what the future and present looks like.
Yeah, I think as long as you just revise us to kind of, so we can address those that are most important and urgent.
Can do.
Thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Anybody have anything else in the water? Is there a motion to go out of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have the wastewater activities report? Any questions on it?
We talked a little bit about the, uh, lagoon liners there, right?
Yeah.
We need to delve into that a little bit more in the future here.
It, yeah, it comes up later, I don't mind.
Yeah.
Just under ARPA since it...
1.2.
It could go in rather.
Yeah.
We'll wait till we get to there.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewage Commissioners and into the regular SLAC board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I'm just gonna kinda roll through this, so I don't have to, so I don't speak too, too much. So the interim zoning administrator duties, I'm still performing those. The BCDP grant application, uh, it was submitted the day after our last select board meeting, and we should know a decision in June. Mortar proctor playground proposal, that was also submitted. I contacted People's Bank for an update. We haven't gotten it yet. So hopefully a decision will be handed out soon on that. Town hall roof repairs, Mr. Miles is coming here to, to repair the roof. He's working on a project now, but we're second on his list. He saw about 15 tiles that needed to be fixed or replaced, and gave us a price of about $650, which is, which was a lot cheaper than the other quote I received. Pool director search, I, I made a video that was well received. Didn't get as much interest as I was hoping for. A lot of views and quite a few likes, but no commitments, no long-term commitments. And we can speak more about the pool director search more in executive session.
So you just got a lot of views on your video?
Got a lot of views, yeah. Yeah, so, Facebook famous, but...
Yeah, right.
I'm leaving the pod.
Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah. So, uh, made corrections, uh, made corrections to the local emergency management plan that we requested at our last select board meeting. Uh, also had a meeting with Lisa, just a phone conversation about maybe next year, including the school a little bit more on that planning process. And I reached out to the superintendent about that, so the doors opened. And I'd be more than happy to entertain that meeting. I submitted insurance claim for Styles Meadow. Got an email today that it's, uh, that it's under review. Sorry, hi, that's my idea here, Charlotte. Transfer station, tickets are downstairs. Uh, there are no fee. We've distributed over 30 so far. The date is May 7. And like, the select board decided it's from 9 to 1, and it happens on green up day. And it happens with hazardous waste day, which happens from 11 to 2. Hazardous waste will be in the parking lot, right outside of transfer station. So you have to have a ticket to get into the transfer station, and there's a list of items that you cannot dump. Uh, it's on the website, and it's also available downstairs. I've ordered two dumpsters just to be safe. They, uh, Casella said since it's green up day, there's a lot of people using resources from them, so good thing we got ahead of it, I guess. And submitted the wetlands permit and mailed out public notices for the Willow Street project. There are eight adjoining properties that can be affected by this. Uh, they've all received everything by certified mail, and we're into the public notes period, and hopefully be ready to proceed in July. Okay, so, uh, regarding ARPA, we had a few questions come up at our last meeting. Unfortunately, Eric Hall with Rutland Regional Planning Commission has left, and he was kinda the ARPA guru there. Uh, so it kinda, it leaves us kinda in the fray, but I, I did as much research on VLCT as I could. And these are the, what I thought were big ticket items, and, and most of them are just dates. And that, the, the town treasurer asked to opt in, opt in to the standard allowance by April 30th, which is the end of this week. And that is very important, we do so, and we're busy again, that again, in, um, discussion action item of the meeting.
And she's aware of that?
She is very aware of that. I think she's downstairs, uh, watching the video now, how we've been working together on it. If you have questions about standard allowance, you can ask. I can try to answer. But we do revisit it later on in the meeting, so there's time for that. Funds, ARPA funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024. Meaning we have to start buying materials or executing in car RPs that we, that, for any projects we've decided. And they have to be spent by December 31st, 2026, they go back to where, where they once belonged. They came from where they came from.
Isn't it true that if they're not obligated by 2024, those funds that aren't obligated go back?
I would guarantee that probably, correct?
I thought that's what I read.
Yeah. And, uh, there, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of room for, but, there doesn't seem to be a lot of comfort room for these dates either. You know, they're saying April 30th, April 30th, so it, it'll probably continue like that. Alright, and then now we can revisit the liners. I spoke to A and E. This was a question that came up at our last select board meeting of, of what the cost for the liners could be. A and E, who is one of our, uh, our project engineers, gave us an estimate two years ago, and it was $500,000 to remove the sludge and replace the liners. Because of fuel and, and because, um, it's so expensive to, uh, oh, what's the word on the word?
Dispose.
Dispose of it. And because of those costs, it's gone, it's doubled. So they're doing a project in Hardwick, which has a, a facility compared to ours. They're only removing the sludge, and it's 1.2. So that's not replacing the liners or anything. So, um, I've got more information in your packets, uh, regarding ARPA and community feedback, and, um, how to best use it. You know, and I think in summary, it's, you know, you're, you're planning for the, you're trying to, you're setting the future generations up for success. So I, I don't think this is a bad project to consider, but it'll be something, something to think about. So, and we can, yeah, we could talk about that more later. Moving on, water system flushing notices are out. Flushing begins May 9th and lasts through May 20th. That they're online, they're posted throughout town, and they're in the Brandon Reporter. Okay, and, and this is, this next line, I don't really, could impact the town. Fuel prices obviously are up, and this impacts our contracted services. And, uh, and the first one has come in, and, and that's Casella. So they started charging a fuel surcharge, and it equates to about $1,000 a month. Uh, if that continues the way it is into FY '23, $1,000 a month for 12 months is a $12,000 deficit in our general fund budget. Which wasn't budgeted for. So it, it'll be, it'll be really important that we're aware of that going into next year's budget cycle. Uh, that, that we've got that kinda looming. So what I would do is, is make sure that, that we're creating a, a comfort zone for us, you know? Like we're, we're, we're saving where we can save. So, and that'll be the goal for FY '23. So that we can react to that deficit.
But they're charging us that now?
Yes.
Is there anything in the contract that allows them to do that?
Yes.
Yes. They actually could've started, they actually could've started doing it quite a while ago.
Once it reaches a certain price. Uh, I believe the sheriff has that in his.
He does.
Yeah.
It hasn't been triggered yet. Theirs is a little bit higher. Casella's is pretty low, but it's like 2.60. And Sheriff's is 3.30. They're in the range.
I remember when I read that.
Yes.
You're paying more money than we are, you?
Yeah. And, and, you know, and when we get to the expenditure report, you're also saying, uh, under the expenditures, you'll see a lot of negatives. And those negatives are beside the, you know, the part that denotes that it's a fuel account. So we're spending a lot of money on fuel, probably will continue to do that. So we're just gotta be mindful of it going into next year, for sure.
World.
Yeah. Alright, Granton Aid Project, Stephanie Burke is coming to town. That's always good news. And, uh, and she'll be here the first week of May for a pre-construction site visit on our proposed Granton Aid project. This is gonna be, um, refitting some outfalls right outside the garage. And if we repair those outfalls, then it brings other streets up into compliance. So River and Grove and Reynolds will all come into compliance just by fixing those outfalls that, uh, that they filter out of. So hopefully that, that is a viable project, and we're known by the end of May. And Marble Bridge repairs, bid solicitation. I've got bids around town, I've got bids in the Brandon Reporter, and I've got bids online, uh, to, for joint sealant application along the Marble Bridge, where you can see it's kinda chipping out of there, and it could cause some weatherization, erosion, so... Uh, hopefully I hear something back soon on that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. Regional managers' lunch, I wrote this down here before I got my cold, but I did make it to my managers' lunch at the cafe at Broadbent's in Brandon. And, and it's unfortunate because it was Dave Haverstock's last one, but we sit really close together and I didn't want to risk getting anybody sick and, which I've been tested for COVID, I'm negative by the way. So didn't go to my managers' lunch. And lastly, on my report here, and I could even end it and let the representatives take over, I attended the Beaver Pond and Parks and Rec Committee. The first five or so items are Beaver Pond and the other two are Parks and Rec, so. Tom, you want to talk a little bit about Beaver Pond?
Uh, gate's unlocked, it's getting used, there was some talk on Facebook about trash and I know for sure one resident did pick up a bunch of trash over there, it was very nice of him. It's just an ongoing problem and it will be.
There were people out today that were picking it up. And I did a little bit.
I know Dale Christie wanted to encourage people to stay on the trails, I think people have been wandering off them a little bit.
The parrot and falcons are nesting at the top of the quarry, so.
Yeah, I heard them the other day.
I, I've never seen one, I guess.
Really? I saw them once, I walked up there with Karen, walked them around, flying all around there. It's kind of cool.
Dock extension from Mortimer Proctor was approved, so that'll be picked up and put in within a month. Some new benches, weather resistant, a little stronger, were paid for from Mortimer Proctor, they're on order and are on the way. And trails, please stay on the trail during the mud season. And we're always looking for a few energetic people to help around the trails or the recreation site.
Yeah, Gunnar's moving is what, what you said at the last, at the last Beaver Pond meeting, huh?
Gunnar.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, he got a different job and he's moving down towards the Springfield, Vermont area.
So we might need help running the fishing event.
Yes, he was, he headed that up, did a great job. He's a, he's a fisherman. He'll be missed.
Judy, anything going on with Parks and Rec or no?
Um, well, Megan's on the phone too, so if she has anything to say. The opening day for the rink is May 30th and that's kind of, I think what Megan's idea was kind of tag on with the Memorial Day parade. So we have the Memorial Day parade that Monday and then after that, there'll be events at the rink. And then I also, I didn't get to read it all, Megan, the email that you sent today to us about the staining of the rink and the rotaries volunteering.
Yep. They will be doing it on June 4th with a rink date of June 11th and it's Rotary South and I want to say Rotary North is both of them that are going to come and stain the rink at no cost and we will provide them with lunch while they do it and with money that we can use with our donation term that we have in the budget for maintenance on it, for, to get the stain, but no cost for labor at all.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so it's really great that the building will be restained and be done because it's painted, especially on the side where the sun hits it constantly, so it'll look really nice when it's done. And thankful that volunteers are doing it at no cost.
That's great.
That was all Brian Perkins that offered to do that and then talked to the Rotary Clubs.
Cool.
So there'll be hambrids and hot ducks, which is kind of nice after the parade too, because we don't usually have stuff then, so it's kind of a good kickoff for the whole thing for Proctor.
All right.
One thing Michael mentioned to the Beaver Pond Committee and we were in favor of it, the triathlon.
Yeah.
You could talk to us a little bit about that.
Well, I just thought it'd be neat to have a, a mini triathlon in town. I think there was once a 5K that happened and maybe COVID stopped it, I'm not sure, I don't have the history of Honda. But yeah, it's still in, in preliminary planning phase, but yeah, we're thinking about maybe a foot race for a mile or a mile and a half and then maybe a kayak for a mile and then bike for a little while. And I've got a drawing, I've got a shirt design, so we've got that done. And then I've asked a few questions about permitting, like if we had to go along Route 3, what kind of obstacles would we face? I mean, what would the cost be and, and all that? So, because that would be a really nice section to run down if, if you could. So, yeah, I think it'll be a fun event and I'll be excited. I'll probably work with the Parks and Rec Committee on it mostly, but I'm hoping at our next meeting we have more of a plan fleshed out and, so we can really envision it.
Yeah.
And you would say kind of anybody can enter, it could be a team effort or a single person?
Oh, yeah. You can, you know, you could, my thoughts is you could, one person could do the whole thing or one person could, you know, you can have a team of three people. So you can have the runner and the kayaker and the biker. I've, I've done small events like that before and they're really fun and they're family-oriented because you know, you're not, you're not killing yourself, it's not 100 miles or anything.
We need a runner, Bruce.
But.
If he's chased. But it sounded like fun.
I think it'll be, I think if it all pans out, I think it'll be a really great thing, so.
The Art Crowley Race comes from Rutland to Proctor over Route 3, spring, summer, beginning, end of spring, beginning, summer.
The date, I don't know.
Yeah, usually we get notified.
Yeah, we can, we don't have to, you know, we, we don't have to be too race legit, I can just post.
No, no, I mean, they might be able to tell you.
Oh, I do.
You have to apply to the state or.
You could even have it going out of Proctor and then do the loop.
Yeah.
On the old Route 3 and back down.
That's what I was thinking. But I just want to make sure, because if you got people running along Route 3, you'd have to shove the road down, so.
They don't for their Crowley race.
They just run on the side.
They run the breakdown lane, coming over and going back. There's generally, they got a sheriff or two driving around, but.
Yeah, you shouldn't be getting a request from them, we haven't had that yet, have we?
Well, I think COVID.
I think they haven't done it for the last two years, so.
Yeah. It's been revisited.
I'm sure Judy could give you a connection in Rutland, when, or us.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to.
I gave, I gave Lisa a picture of a design I did and, so hopefully somebody will color it up there, because I colored one, so I can't color it up.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
What can I get for you? Let's see, I'll take two seconds.
I'm getting into this.
Megan videos, he's making t-shirts.
People said, people said they thought it was on John Corliss.
That's cute.
I'll show it on the webcam here while we're. So, anyway.
We, we are having a Beaver issue over there, we're cutting trees down.
All right, so that concludes my managers' report.
All right. Okay. Discussion and action items, everybody signing the bills?
Yes.
But I will. Any questions on them? I have a question, I'm wondering, do you get a detailed invoice from San Souci?
I do. Want to see it?
Yes, I'd like to see it.
I'll give it to you. To you after the meeting?
Yeah, that's, I was wondering.
Our treasurer was out of town for a while and, and I just came upon this because I need to check the dock doctors, but when she's out of town, nobody could cut a check. I think we need to have someone be able to sign a check when she's on vacation, you know, for emergencies or what. I could wait it was an emergency, but was just surprised that assistant town clerk or the town manager couldn't sign a check.
We don't have an assistant though? Oh, you mean Mary? Mary give it? She is advertising for that now, all right?
I haven't seen it.
No, I haven't seen it. It's another thing we can bring up at our next, she's invited.
Yeah.
Michael, would, would you be willing to sign checks? I mean, I don't know how this.
If, 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 I'm allowed to, I wouldn't have a problem with doing it.
Good. I mean, Fairhaven's going through an issue now, so.
Yeah. I'm not sure where they landed on that or not.
I'm not either. Would you mind asking VLCT what we need to do? I, I just think one person with the pocketbook is not a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know the, I, I've done as much quick research in the statute as I can. I, I do feel somewhat confident in saying that probably only the treasurer consigned checks, but I can do research into it, I'll let you know.
Well, I mean, she should be able to assign someone, I would think, in her absence.
All right.
Sheriff's report, any questions?
Just one silly little one, if you could just ask them. The very first day, from 2230 to 2330, assist BSP family fight with a firearm in Pittsburgh. Wondering why we're getting charged an hour to help the state police with a family fight in Pittsburgh.
I, I saw that as well, it kind of came up at the last minute.
Maybe a typo. No, we pay for mutual aid.
Yes.
With the police department. We, our guy goes to West Rutland.
But this is Pittsburgh, they have their own police department.
Mutual aid.
Yeah, but this is state police.
If, if an officer says he needs help, then the closest person's going to go. We were told in the past. I, I've never seen them log it in before.
Yeah. But I mean, just that it was built to our hours, that's what I.
Yep, we pay. It's like our firemen going to Pittsburgh. We pay.
Where?
Yep, we pay them there.
There was paperwork in our packet a few weeks back or a few meetings back about that.
Yep.
I'll, I'll still look into it.
Maybe just log it in too, just as a.
There was a state trooper Sunday, I think, had a car pulled over on South Street down here in town.
Boy, they must have been really bad.
Well, the trooper was red, I don't know what was going on, but man, he was upset.
They were there for a while too.
Yeah, they were.
I was thinking maybe he just was here and then he had to go to Pittsburgh, so he noted why he went to Pittsburgh.
Well, they shoot through here a lot, this is part of the bypass.
Facility use agreement policy, move to adopt the facility use agreement policy, application forms, do they review those?
Yep.
The only question I had, should the ball fields be on there?
Oh, yeah, and we said that last time.
I'm not sure if that's.
We're include, we will include them.
I believe the town owns them, so.
We will include ball fields.
But other than that, it looked fine to me.
So is there a motion to approve the facility use policy with the addition of ball fields added to the facilities?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So is there a motion to approve the facility use agreement application form?
So moved, yeah, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, both are approved.
All right, I'll have that stuff uploaded to the website so people can access it this
Access to accept the standard allowance for ARPA for the ARPA funds.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it is. For anyone who doesn't know, standard allowance, just saying that we're a small town, we received under $10 million, so we're accepting the easier route of reporting and accepting the
Sounds all right to me.
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion to move that the town proctor make the one-time irremovable decision to elect a standard allowance approach for our ARPA award in the amount of $476,787.2 to spend on provision of government services throughout the period of performance of the grant?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
This, will this money come before, say, a project is done or will we pay and then be reimbursed?
So we've got it.
Okay, it's already here.
Yeah, and it's also worth noting that it's, it's, it's in your checking account, so when you're looking at your balance sheet, always think that we've got $238 in there that's assigned.
There are motion to go to executive session to discuss the contract for an interim pool director of the provisions of Title I, Section 313A, 1 capital A of the Vermont statutes.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, an executive session.